Get ready. Go. Good morning, we will open the Tuesday, December sixth, two thousand twenty-two commission meeting. First order of business is the oath of office for the newly re-elected commissioners. And we'll have them read the. We'll have them read your oath of office.
Right there. Got it? I, Bo Anderson of Williston, North Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Williams County Commissioner, District One, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I, Corey Hanson of Williston, North Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Williams County Commissioner for District Three, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I, Barry Ramberg of Williston, North Dakota, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of North Dakota that will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Williams County Commissioner, and to the best of my ability, so help me under God.
Thank you. Uh, next order of business is we'll have reorganization of the board. First thing we need to do is, call for nominations for chairman. Do I have any nominations for chairman? Okay, I'll do a roll call. Barry?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Corey?
Here.
Bo?
Here.
David?
Here.
Now we'll have reorganization of the board. And if I can have a nomination for chairman.
I would move to nominate Corey Hanson to be our chairman.
Do I have any other nominations? Do I have any other nominations? Do I have any other nominations? Do I have a motion to cast unanimous ballot? And a second?
No move. Second.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm gonna turn the mic over to the.
Thanks Beth for doing that. I believe now we need to ask for nomination for Vice Chair of the Williams County Commission. Is there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Mr. Anderson as Vice Chair of the Commission.
Thank you. Uh, any other nominations for Vice Chair of the Commission? Any other nominations? Last time, any other nominations? Can we have a motion to cast unanimous ballot?
I'd make a motion to cast unanimous ballot.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, Beth, can you take a roll call, please?
Steve?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried, congratulations. All right, uh, now that we're through that, is there anything else we need to do? Do we need to, uh, we don't need to go on to anything about the, uh, our portfolios until the end, right?
Yeah, we'll do that at the end when Helen comes down.
Okay, if everybody could please stand for the pledge of allegiance, we're not gonna sing, we're gonna say the pledge. Okay, uh, pretty extensive consent agenda. What are the wishes, gentlemen?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Corey?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, that'll bring us right to new business, the Atmospheric Resource Board. I believe we have a little presentation.
All right, thank you and good morning, Commission. Um, I'm Mark Schneider. I work for the Atmospheric Resource Board in Bismarck. Darren Langard, my director, usually gives this, uh, final report of our summer program, uh, but couldn't make it. I wanted to make sure that everyone had a chance to look over the cost review, and I have extras here printed if anyone would like one now. Okay, um, well, you know, that's, that's the main thing to go over with you guys, and, um, as you can see, um, again, we did come in under budget for the season, and that was mainly due to the below-average flight hours. As you guys know, that, um, you know, beginning in April, we got some moisture, and then, um, you know, the weather carried off and on through the beginning of July, and then things really, uh, dried up again. So, um, for our project, um, for the summer, we flew two hundred eighty-five hours. And, um, what I wanted to point out on the cost review there, so there's aircraft services, and that's the large expense. So what that's for is just to have those five aircraft, which, um, we had one in Williston, one in Watford City, uh, one in Stanley, and two based down in Bowman this summer. And to have those five aircraft, um, it's a, it's a lease cost, uh, to have them in place for the three months of the summer from June first through August thirty-first. And that's, that's the large expense of the program. Underneath that, you can see the flight hours, both, uh, our base seating aircraft, and then the item below that, the, the top seating aircraft. And we budgeted, uh, roughly ninety-two thousand dollars, and for expenditures on both of those, um, added together, roughly, you know, sixty-two thousand dollars. So, uh, there's our undridge of, uh, roughly thirty thousand of that, thirty-one seven fifty-one. A couple of things to, you know, that were different this summer, um, to talk about. So in the past, we had separated, uh, the Northern District in, as District Two, and, and we still call it that. Um, but what we've been able to do is, uh, we're looking at it as a, a project now versus District One's budget and District Two's budget. So as a project, um, we operated with the five aircraft. Uh, we did move the King Air aircraft, uh, that was based in Williston last, uh, summer. That would have been the summer of twenty-one. Uh, we moved that down to Watford City. We left, uh, a base seating aircraft up in Williston. Uh, the main reason for that were logistics so that we could top seat occasionally for our, uh, district down in the southwest corner, where Bowman and Slope Counties. What we've been able to do, though, is, um, we, we didn't have a day where there was some kind of a conflict, and, and they needed the, the top seater down south, and we couldn't use it up here. We even have the option of launching that top seater from, uh, Watford City, um, and using them in both districts on the same flight. So just logistically, Watford City was, um, was a, a better, uh, fit there for, you know, to serve the whole project. I wanted to point out, uh, down below, it says off-budget costs and state funds. So this isn't, uh, any part county. Uh, this is all state fund, um, and forty thousand seven sixty-nine, and that's for our intern pilots. So the pilot that sits right seat in these airplanes is an intern pilot, uh, with the University of North Dakota, and that's our, uh, intern program that's been going since the nineteen seventies. So we've been able to, um, train over four hundred interns, uh, since the nineteen seventies on our program. And, and that's something that state has, has paid for. It's, um, not any part counties. So I guess, uh, were there any questions on the cost review there?
Well, just kudos to training pilots, because God knows we need more pilots right now, so keep up that good work.
Well, thank you, and, um, our, our contractor realizes that, uh, aspect too with, um, hiring their, their pilots in command for left seat. They have, uh, difficulties in, in some of these last few years, especially, uh, getting the, the qualified pilots. But luckily, they've, um, offered them incentives for staying on, um, you know, full-time, so that's, that's been working out. I would say the only other thing I should mention to you guys, um, so the Williston radar, um, we support that on our website, so you could go to Department of Water Resources, click on, um, Atmospheric Resource Board, and, and then there's real-time radars. So, um, we display that on our website, and, um, in the future, uh, that radar, um, your radar, um, would, uh, potentially be utilized more. We have our radar, um, in Stanley, but it doesn't have a lot of the capabilities that the Williston radar does. So, um, you know, that Williston radar could come in, um, in the future for, um, research, or it could even be, it technically could be used as an operational radar, uh, in the future, uh, for our program. It's situated out west, and it's in, in a really good spot for serving the district. So, um, yeah, that, um, we'll be meeting with the, the counties, uh, here late January and, and doing, doing the planning for the upcoming, uh, next summer season. But we really don't anticipate, um, much, uh, of any increase in cost for next summer's program, because we had come in under in flight hours and used less, uh, chemical as well. So, um, we're, um, yeah, this, next summer would be the second year in, in a three-year contract with, uh, Weather Modification International out of Fargo as well. So, um, yeah, I guess, uh, did you guys have any, uh, questions for me?
No.
Uh, sure.
Doesn't look like. Thank you. I really appreciate you coming and giving us an update.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. All right.
Okay, uh, planning and zoning.
Good morning, Commissioner Sam Miller with County Planning. First on our agenda, um, we have LU dash zero one zero zero dash two-two. Ed Rintmaki on behalf of Brian Hottenfield is requesting a zone change to rural residential for an approximate seven-point-nine acre lot. The property is currently within the agricultural zoning district. Um, the parent parcel is a quarter section currently. Um, the newly created lot, that, uh, roughly eight-acre property, um, will be to encompass an existing home and farm buildings. That is the property that will be going into that, um, rural residential. And you can kinda see it within the quarter section that's highlighted there. Um, there's that existing farmstead, so they're just parcelling that out, creating the subdivision legally. They're actually right at the point of recordation. So following this meeting, if this zone change is approved, that'll go to the recorder's office to be recorded and then subsequently, um, rezoned. There was township recommendation for approval, and then this item was heard at the November seventeenth meeting, and unanimously recommended approval, seven to zero, with two comments, one being recordation of the plat, and then the second just being our typical adherence to zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. Um, the plat is attached for review.
Okay, um, I s- Ed, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, gentlemen, uh, pretty straightforward. Any, what are the wishes?
Move to approve following planning or staff comments.
There's motions. There a second?
Second.
Uh, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks. Um, next on the agenda is LU dash zero one zero one dash two-two. Ed, um, was also representing the applicant. So this is for Sarah Henderson for David Steen. So this item had gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission on November seventeenth. In between that meeting and this meeting, I received an email from Ed requesting that this be removed off of this agenda. So we won't actually go through with this, but we did wanna put it on the agenda just to show that it was going through the typical public hearing process. But, um, that's kind of where this one will stand. So because we got that request for it to be removed, the plat will also be halted. There was a plat associated with this too. So if you don't have any other comments, or if Ed doesn't wanna say anything, that kinda concludes my presentation.
Ed, do you have anything to add on that?
Ed Rintmaki is this on? Forty-ninth Latitude Line Survey. Like Sam said, this was, uh, was at the planning and zoning agenda, or on the, on the meeting agenda, and since that time, a couple of things became, uh, noted. One being that there was gonna be a requirement for road improvement at the end of the existing driveway there, and then also a stormwater report, which these two items weren't brought to my attention in the beginning stages, and the cost associated with those requirements is essentially what canceled the project when I reviewed it with, uh, with the clients.
Okay, thank you. Next one.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is LU dash zero zero nine six dash two-two. Um, Ms. Black is requesting a conditional use permit for an agritourism slash outdoor recreation center. So I'll explain this a little bit more as we continue with the project. But this property, um, is about ten acres. As you can see from the map, it's currently within this light industrial zoning district. Um, if you zoom out a little bit, um, there is some commercial slash industrial uses to the west, and then to the east there, there's residential. Um, there's a pretty decent-sized residential subdivision, and then directly to the west of it, there's those rural residential pieces, just to provide some context. So the applicant's requesting this conditional use permit. It's, it's kind of this like quasi, it was, it was somewhat difficult of a project design to fit into one specific definition, so that's why it has this agritourism outdoor recreation center. So basically, the applicant is proposing, um, seasonal activities. So for example, she had a temporary use permit that was granted for the fall. What she had out there was corn mazes. She had a few little bonfire pits. Um, nothing of permanent structure, so she didn't have to pull any building permits. This was all kind of, she had set it up. And then what she's requesting for today, or when she began the conditional use permit process, is so she could keep this going on annually. So every season, she'd kind of replace the last season's activities with new activities. So, um, when we were talking through her definition, um, it was just kind of these temporary uses, and then she'd change them out. But I did tell her to put any, um, like, future plans she has for this site within this conditional use permit, so she didn't have to constantly come back to amend the CUP. So that's why you see more permanent, um, things on there, like, uh, mini golf, um, ziplining, uh, things like that. So she did put in, like, pool, water park, spa retreat with hot tubs, and I just said, you know, that doesn't really fit in with this definition. So if she did wanna have more, um, expansive and extensive uses like those, she would have to come back and amend her conditional use permit. So that's kind of a project description. Just a bit of history for this lot. As you can see, this is the only light industrial property, um, adjacent. So back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the property was zoned, rezoned from rural residential to light industrial. The purpose for this zoning change was for, um, a well-service shop. Her and her, uh, Ms. Black and her husband own a service shop company, and so they wanted to put, um, one big shop on there with the, um, potential for adding a second one later on. So that was approved. They went through the storm water, or storm water management board, um, got an approved storm water management plan, began doing the work for that. Um, some things happened where they weren't able to construct that service shop. So they had approached the building department, um, to get extensions on that building, because it was written into the zone change that if they didn't actually construct the shop, um, within eighteen months, that the zoning would revert. So they've, they've gotten these extensions. Um, one was actually just granted until July first of next year. So they have until July first to build this shop. But in the meantime, and I guess in the future, they wanna have both of these uses. So they wanna have their well-service shop, and then they also wanna do these seasonal activities on the same site. So this was heard at the October twentieth Planning and Zoning Meeting. It was tabled because we, they needed a little bit more understanding of, um, like, how the well-service shop use was gonna function, 'cause they kind of weren't sure, like, how can you have a corn maze while you're also running a service shop on the same property? Um, so there was some clarification there. And then it was heard again at the November seventeenth meeting, where, um, a condition was added that there was gonna be a security fence around the shop to really separate the two uses. And then with that addition to the staff recommendation, um, they recommended approval. It's a lot of information, so if you need me to go through anything, or if you need more clarification, please let me know. But that pretty much concludes staff's, um, presentation, and then you can see there are nine conditions associated with this, um, project.
Okay, has anybody got any questions? I don't, no applicant present, correct?
And just something, can I just add something really quick?
Sure.
Yeah, so, um, the temporary use permit, they did get a temporary use permit. How we structured the temporary use permit was that they were given one, um, they had fourteen days. We actually allowed them to break that up, because these kind of activities usually happen over the weekends. And so we said, you can have fourteen days, but it just has, it, you can do like two days for each weekend. It just can't exceed fourteen days. And so that's kinda how, and I'm sure there, it was up on Facebook, like, it was pretty well-known. That's how she was operating, like, through the season, was she was given those fourteen days. And she would have, she would have the ability then to keep applying for these temporary uses. You can have four events, and that kinda covers your four seasons. But she wanted the conditional use permit, so she didn't have to keep applying for temporary use permits.
How did it go? Just curious.
I think it went pretty well.
It sounds cool.
I know one of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners went out. He took his family out there. It was, yeah, during the fall season, so, short.
Just one more thing for families to do.
So. What are the wishes?
I'd make a motion to approve following staff's recommendations.
Well, seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks, that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Sam. Looks like Lindsay, I believe you're up.
Good morning. Um, during the budget cycles, uh, we had discussed the project to do a brand diagnostic relocation guide that would benefit the county as a whole, um, to be made available to employers, organizations, et cetera. Uh, so what is in your packet is the formal request for quote, um, to be able to send out to get that number, so that we can get started.
What kind of motion are you looking?
Yeah, what, um, what are you exactly looking for?
I had to approve the, um, I guess this is also kind of a double-check that, uh, this is something the Commission was still interested in, that it would still be kept in the budget, uh, and then I guess a motion to approve the request for quote to be sent out. Uh, the intention would be to send it to AA2S, is the company that had done the Grand Forks one, which was kind of the concept that, um, a couple of the organizations we had discussed to move forward with, so.
Yeah, we wanna make it as easy as possible for people to locate here, and it's, well, anyway, so it sounds like a good deal.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, make that a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Moved and seconded to, uh, send the request out?
Yes.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thanks.
Perfect. Thank you, Lindsay. Uh, is there any department heads that needed to get in before Helen comes down? Come on down, Helen.
Just a bit of clarity on that last item. You know, it is our, it's our method to get approval generally in the budget cycle, and then to make sure, to confirm that you all still have the same priorities here. And so although your motion sort of just implied for Lindsay to go get the quote, my thought would be actually the intention is to approve her to proceed with the project, not just get the quote. We wouldn't intend to come back in every phase of the project.
I'd make a second emotion, motion to approve the, what? Moving forward with the project. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Do we get a better website than Grand ForksIsCooler.com? Like, Williston is warmer?
Boy, we, we have. Right. That's Lindsay's thought. Williston is not that bad. Williams County, sorry. It's all a joke.
Okay, let's get back on track here. Moved and seconded, is that enough discussion? I think, maybe. Let's have a roll call. Uh, moved and seconded, is that enough discussion? I think maybe. Let's have a roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now we're back to a serious meeting.
All right, you'll see we have no second meeting in a row. We have no request to, uh, open positions. You'll see that we are advertising some spots at the sheriff's office. And that is because we, we've had some internal promotions and changing, and so we just continue to roll through getting those positions filled. Uh, we have, we have some, we have an open seat on the Upper Missouri District Health Unit Board. And, and just a disclosure in the process of going through that, Karen did some review of the century code for us, and our population change actually changes the number of seats that we are to have on the health unit board. But Javane has been out, and so we're going to wait until she's back, get that sorted. So we'll talk about that probably at the next meeting. And the water board, uh, has a few candidates to review at their next meeting. And so again, we're working our way through those two, even though the dates here might indicate we're at the time. But uh, Dan McGinnity has agreed to continue in his seat on the Upper Missouri Regional River Regional Dispatch Board. And so I would ask your, for a motion to appoint him, please.
I would make a motion to, uh, appoint Danny McGinnity to the U M R R D C Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, and then portfolio assignment review. I did email this out to you last week for your review ahead of this meeting. It is typical in this reorganization meeting that then your portfolios and committee assignments are affirmed. As far as I can tell, meaning, I haven't heard from anybody that you'd like to make adjustments. You know, sometimes I have some proposals based on your requests, but I haven't heard anything.
Is everybody good with where they're at?
I, I feel good about what, what I've got, so.
If everybody's good, do we just need a motion to approve it?
Yep.
Okay, can we get a, a motion to approve the portfolio assignments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we hold the, uh, portfolios as, uh, we have in the past.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Beau?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes. Motion carried. Is that it, Helen? Thank you. Uh, now we need a motion to go into executive session to consider and discuss confidential, commercial, financial, or proprietary information to consider and discuss economic development records, to discuss negotiating strategy, or to provide negotiating instructions related to the Ceralon loan agreement, and for a possible attorney con- consultation related to the Ceralon loan agreement. The legal authority for holding executive session is North Dakota Century Code, section forty-four dash oh four dash eighteen point four subsections one, two, and five B. Section forty-four oh four nineteen point one, sections two, five, and nine, and section forty-four oh four dash nineteen point two, section one. The board will return to open meeting after the executive session.
I'll make a motion to, uh, go into executive session as stated, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will go into executive session.
We will call the commission meeting back to order. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to move forward on a loan to Saraland on the terms discussed during the executive session.
Is there a second? Second. Moved in second of any discussion. Beth Roll call please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Just say abstain.
And the advice of council abstain.
Corey?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carried. No further business. We will adjourn.